Okay.
Call the meeting to order. Here.
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 Okay.
Here. All right, we have student council that can lead us up there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Want to introduce yourselves and tell us what you got going?
Sure, I'm Jane Martin, I'm a representative of student council and I'm sure to do majors. So with student council, we are now working on the semi-formal dance, which is our winter dance. We changed it from vice versa to that. And we're just working on the decorations as well as like the theme days going on with that. We're also working on Mr. Panther, which we're bringing back this year, and fundraising options for student council.
So is it like vice versa? Do the girls have to ask the boys?
Uh, no, it's basically just a winter formal dance that everyone can go to and you don't really have the pressure of asking anyone, so.
Thank you for sharing on Facebook. Yeah, the mothers have all kinds of comments.
It's new.
It's new.
Yeah.
Questions, comments.
All right, well, thank you. All right, do we have any visitors in course? Number five reports.
Uh, it's in your packet.
Five point two enrollment.
You can see that as well. With the midterm graduate, we're about thirteen seventy-one, so twenty-nine looks like, ish. Because I think we're pretty close to fourteen hundred.
I looked at that and first thought, whoa, and then I remembered that that's mature. Already we're staying where the rest of the state.
Uh, five point three, uh, early intervention reports, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Yep, and that's just from the first master, just so you get a feel for what is going on. You can see the number of students that we're seeing, counselors, and very busy issue.
All right, uh, five point four, financial reports.
Okay, um, I'll hit the expense report because I brought some of this information to board members on, uh, at the finance committee. And, uh, so one of the items I just want to bring up is, you know, we should be about fifty-eight to sixty percent of the way through the, you know, our budgeted expenses. And, uh, on this expense report, one of the things that's jumping out is, um, we're at almost seventy-six percent of our out-of-district tuition costs. And that has, uh, continued to increase with out-of-district placements. And that's per their IEPs. And so, but, uh, for like our payroll, all the other, uh, major funds, uh, major accounts, we're doing, um, well with that, so. The other report that I'm gonna touch base on is the investment and insurance report. So as you can see, I have the central Illinois Invest, this is continuing to grow at a nice, um, rate. And, uh, I'll report out on that, like where we're at as far as interest, it has accumulated at about six months. And so we've almost got nine million dollars total in investments. And then on the insurance side, um, we finally did get, uh, consociates, um, year-end report, so, this is about as close as it we're gonna get as far as, uh, being finalized. And if you take a look, you know, underneath medical expenses, between this year and last year, you'll see a large difference. That was anticipated, um, with the amount of, uh, claims that we had that rolled throughout last year and into, and this is calendar year. So this is January, so it's January one of two thousand nineteen. And so, you know, it actually covers into last, um, school year. With that, you'll see that we had almost seven hundred thousand dollars in, in reimbursements. When you have that much in claims, you're gonna have that much in reimbursements. And so when you look at a net, this is what, um, the insurance plan spent more than the, uh, previous year. And so then when you take a look at the month, total monthly expenditures, you'll see how this one is, and I mentioned this last month. November is below because we received a lot of money in stop loss, um, during that month, so it offset the expense. But, you know, some of these bars are well above and not a good indicator for where we were at in this, this year. We're gonna continue to watch it. Hopefully by March, April, things will level out and, um, we'll be good to go on that, so. The only other thing I really want to bring up, you know, the revenue report is pretty, pretty much status quo. That, that graph doesn't change much. I did include, uh, a continuing disclosure and undertaking, um, to all the board members. This is filed on our behalf from First Midstate, and it's for all of the bonds that we have, it has to be filed. It's actually called EMA, the Electronic Municipal Market Access. And it has to be published. It's, it's really a snapshot of WCHS. There is a lot of really good information, like a lot of good financial information in there. And so I'm giving it to you, if you want to look, look it on over and if you have any questions or anything that would be in there over the next month, give me a shout, okay? Is there any questions on financial reports?
I had one, um, that out-of-district tuition, those are basically special ed students, correct?
Yes.
We cannot serve here because we don't have the programs.
Those are students that are, um, placed out of district. And we have them in several different locations.
And that, those students can remain in our school till they reach, what is it, their twenty-second birthday?
Till the day they turn twenty-two.
And then, some of these then, depending on the age, and, and not changing conditions for those, we can anticipate that this will go on for extended time, so we have to budget.
It can. And the other side of the glory is, uh, last year we had a student that was at Central Fifty-One that turned fifteen. On the day that they turned fifteen, they become our, um, they really become our responsibility, even though they were still underneath the educational, uh, plan at District Fifty-One. And so that was a student that, then, after they turned fifteen, we get invoice for the tuition cost for that student. And so, um, we really get them at high school for a large number of years. And so, but it, it's what it is that we need to, I don't want to talk in the negative about this.
No, I'm talking realistically.
But yes, that's it.
That we have to then anticipate through those, those years and age of the student, and there needs, how long we need to budget or cover this. So it isn't just a year, one year report, this is probably not what we need extended.
Yes, and what we're seeing, and we've talked with, um, Ms. Gresham, uh, there are students, it seems like in most districts, uh, we're seeing more and more of this. In fact, uh, Dr. Freeman, was she talking about High Roads? One of the out-of-district placements, uh, one of the, you know, uh, educational institutions is looking at opening up another branch in Central Illinois. And I can't remember if it's down.
High Roads.
Yeah, so that is a Bloomington service. They're gonna be opening up a service here in Peoria. And so that will actually help us out, uh, because of transportation costs, it'll be a lot less for transportation. But it's something that is continuing to grow.
Oh, it's rather new to us, and it will be.
Well, and just so you understand how things are going, it's not open, but it's full. And there's a waiting list.
There's serving more and more students.
And that's, that's part of education, and we're seeing more and more.
Joe, on the insurance report, is it possible to get a breakdown of the total cost for maybe the last three or four years? Just so we can see how that number's changing? Yep, time, can you go back then?
Anything else on the financial reports? All right, um, five point five board committee reports.
So for finance, we, Dr. Sander informed us that, um, we may want to amend the budget as we get closer than fiscal year because, uh, a couple extra costs from construction and also out-of-district costs for certain placements of students having unique needs. And then we also discussed the new finance goals, in particular, number three, uh, we replaced the Trump plan with a new one about optimizing uh, finance, uh, fiscal, every year, you know, optimizing fiscal, um, opportunities. And so that's something that we'll talk about down the road at the next planning session. I don't think there is, there is one other thing.
And you're putting together board goal for the finance? Is that a part of that?
Yep, and it is redone now. I mean, we've got the wording and everything, and I think.
Well, I think we got it.
Yeah.
I think, I think we're working on some of the wording on it, but we got a, a good start on it. And then there was one other thing, we had like the follow-up and kind of the close-up of the, um, capital improvement projects that we talked about, and I think that's what Joe just gave us some of that from the budget of where we came with that, and then.
He also applied for the, turned in a full application for that, uh, grant regarding the School Maintenance Project Grant from the state. Yep, so we got that in.
How long does it take to hear back from?
Uh, it is open until midnight on February fourteenth, I think, and then it closes. And so I just double-checked today, um, the School Maintenance Project Grant is loaded, it's been approved by the ROE at their level, so it's just sitting at the.
But do we hear back shortly after the?
I, I would say so, I, I don't know what the exact timeline is, so.
All right, well, that's what I, that's what I wonder, is it gonna be like three months and we don't hear?
What I hinted out is what I, I kind of covered with the board, is, or the finance committee. This is just a thirty-thousand-foot overview of, um, the top portion is, is actually what we had budgeted in two different funds in our capital projects. We basically had just over six million dollars, you know, between our working cash, um, bond issues, and then, um, you know, spending one point five million that we transferred on over. We had about six million dollars. And then when you throw in, um, some of the architect and engineering fees, we had, you know, six point two-five million dollars to cover everything, right? And so right now, we're sitting at about six point eight million as far as what the total project and the cost. And so I wanted to break that out as like where some of those costs were coming from. And so you can see what the contractor's cost is, I put the back up, the, uh, on the next page is what we've, um, those are the two contract agreements that PJ Hair submits whenever we get invoice for bills. And so you can see what the total project crop costs has, has gone to. And then, uh, the outside contracts, and these were things that we actually saved two point four percent by doing them in-house. So we did this work, you know, we coordinated that, so it didn't, it wasn't run through the project. And so, so these are the things that were really necessities, not necessarily niceties. And you can see what, uh, the total cost overall, uh, for all the work that we've done. And so that's one of the driving forces as far as, we'll most likely need to amend our budget because we'll exceed the expenditure, the budget expenditures. There's nothing wrong with amending the budget, you know, we have the funds to cover it. It's just so that, you know, when the auditors come here in July, um, our budget is clean and it doesn't show that we spent more than what we had expected to spend.
Committee supported, thought it was good practice.
And facilities, that also.
That's been quite a while ago, I'm trying to remember which facility meeting that was. It was one of what was.
We had.
Project. Uh, PJ, yeah, PJ Hair was there and gave an update of where they were. Also gave an update of the new, uh, facilities, of the, the classrooms up there, they're not quite completed. And the completion date was, except for the end of this month, correct?
Yes.
And so we went through that, and then the last bit of cost. And then also, we talked about a little bit about scoreboards, we're gonna talk about, we talked about again. Trying to think of what, anything else was on there?
I think we, we probably touched base on, we did, we talked a little bit about the proposed goal for facilities on.
Right. Oh, but the print about long-range, long-range planning.
So some long-range.
Is there any idea when the Circle Drive will open up again?
Once we get the dumpster out, it's no longer construction due. We still have a lot of, last week on Thursday, there were six pickup trucks parked in Circle Drive as they were working on stuff inside the building. It's still a construction zone, so.
Oh, yeah.
Until that's done, it's gonna stay closed.
Is it, is the project scheduled to finish on Feb. twenty-one, or not?
Depending on, yeah, yeah, it's supposed to, but we're in into one little issue today, and we'll see what that drags it up. Might be another week.
But we're closing then?
We are closing.
That's awesome.
We did talk about that facilities a little bit, and we thought, um, administration was gonna come up with a plan eventually when they opened it up. If they're gonna put, uh, be closed during certain times, drop-off and start-up, if I, if I believe that correctly. And then either would have an arm or a chain or something, they're gonna come up with some kind of plan that will work for all of us and then put that out to the public. Because one of the concerns is the, um, handicap parkings there. And so people that are handicapped are having a little bit, they should get across the street during winter.
But during drop-off and pickup.
We'll let them figure that all out.
Yeah, drop-off and pickup. The big problem is, you have a significant number of kids crossing from senior lot, so they're crossing traffic twice. It's just.
And we've got people parking up and down Jefferson, and pick our kids up to form a circle, and I think this department's gonna have it.
Our current process actually works better than any process we've had since I've been here. By having the drop-off on, by Durant at the flagpole entrance, we're keeping parents separate from, walking students separate from buses which are in the back. And that's allowing us to bring kids in from three directions instead of one. Everybody trying to get in the same doors is a problem.
But during the day, possibly when the construction's done?
Yeah, yeah, once, once that's closed, and, once that, once that's closed out and we're able to do that, then they can, we can reopen that during this, or the circle during the day. But we'll have to just be aware, we have parents that show up at like two fifteen to park. So we're gonna have to shut it down at about two o'clock. Otherwise, you're gonna have parents wind up in the Circle Drive. You know, and then we have to go out and chew them out, which always ends up in an argument, that's just not worth it. Yeah, have it. Sometimes amazing. I looked up, I back when I had the dual windows, and I could see my Durant. There were times I saw parents already parked at one thirty.
Big issues in education.
I, I love my kids very much. I'm okay, thank you, Mary, until the end of the day, so.
All right, um, okay, so we'll talk about the scoreboards a little bit. So on to, um, discussion informational items. We've got some resignations, six point one resignation Jamie Fry as a student supervisor, or James Fry, I'm sorry.
He, uh, he, yeah, another job.
Six point two resignation Polly Fuller, a Spanish teacher.
Yes, um, hate to see that one, but we understand it.
I did want to type in a little bit, I did have the opportunity to get invited to go to lunch with her a couple weeks ago. She's doing fabulous and upbeat, and, um, she's, does it tell everybody hello?
She's doing well, she looked fantastic.
So I think we'll see her around, I think she's gonna do some self-informed, so.
All right, six point three resignation of Graham Miles, assistant boys' lacrosse coach.
Similar situation. Work, not similar, I guess. Goes to job.
Six point four resignation of Jody Sheldon, marching bin assistant. She's been in a long time.
She's been in a long time.
Six point five is resignation Gabriel Williams, full-time food service, service worker. Six point six, uh, FOIA electrical workers, IDW, thirty-four. All right, uh, six point seven township staffing needs.
Okay. So, um, just to be aware, we're probably gonna be opening a position for another psychologist for the township, which would allow us to assign one psychologist to each district. We currently have three and four social workers, so this will make it four and four, so that each district has a psych and a social worker assigned to their district.
Those aren't easy to find.
No. And so we need to, uh, get that open and get started, just so you're aware. But it's, it was a township decision, so it affects all four districts. The other thing that might be a change there is at some point in time. So right now, Annette is the director, she has an assistant. We have another, um, person working there that's working as a liaison, basically. But he's finishing up his administrative certification, and we'll move him up to assistant as well, so that we have better coverage through the districts. So each assistant will be assigned to districts where they can be there more frequently. Some of the complaints we get from our, our theaters is that they don't see enough of the special ed administration to get a lot of questions answered, they don't know who to go to with things. And so this is the help kind of better serve the, all the districts. Bear in mind, we have, we have four districts and seven schools. So for two people to cover seven schools, it can be pretty difficult.
Is this the interim District Fifty-two?
No, that's a, that's a psychologist interim, psych. I think. I think that's what the psych interim is.
I know, it's me.
Yeah.
And so, since, since each of the grade school districts now is, is, as things go as planned, gonna have its own little piece of a, um, more intensive special ed program, like early childhood, fifty-two, and so on, right?
That's part of the discussion, yes.
Are, are the, are, are we managing the, I mean, sometimes when we just, because we've been adding on and beefing up this department for a while now. And I mean, I know after Joe left, there was a desire to kind of take a good look at it, because it had been about the same for a while. So is it, is it turning out that we're building a really, consciously building a program? Just let me think. Because what I want to ask is, instead of just adding on, are we actually building towards something that will really work well for the situation that we have?
That is the point, yes.
That's, okay.
So last week, I met with every principal in the township, the superintendents and the curriculum directors, and we had a long conversation about what our current services are and what we'd like to see. And so that was a big part of that discussion. So we did have good discussion about different programming, talking about what we can do. And so right now on the table, we're discussing the potential for an ED program, uh, at the, at the elementary level. So it'll be something that can feed, or that all three theater districts could utilize. Right now, one of the theaters houses most of the life skills students. PCE, which is early childhood, is kind of spread out between the three districts, however, one of the districts also houses over. So we're looking at programming now associated. We're, we're starting to look more like a traditional co-op, is I guess what I'm saying. So trying to find placement, trying to find services for students who need services outside of just the normal that we've been providing. And I will tell you, that we're seeing the costs escalate without a district placement, so are they. And that's just a growing, so the ED program that we're talking about, the transition program, it's not like a residential. It's trying to, trying to catch issues early on and train students with the right skills so that they can better survive within the school atmosphere. Because I think that's where some of the issue is. You know, if you catch them early enough before that spiral gets too deep, you might be able to keep them at their home school and, and get them into a place where they're, where they're functioning much better. And so that's the thought, it's, it's really looking at the early attention.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's awesome. And then so, and what prompted me to think that is, as you add these assistant administrators, I mean, one or the other might be especially good in the different schools, so I'm just, I've just gotten going, so. Sounds like you're on it, thank you very much.
Well, it's been, it's been one of those things. We'll, we'll be meeting more frequently, having these conversations. So the way that the agreement's written for superintendent serve is kind of a guiding council, but we had a conversation about where things are, and said, we really need to meet with the principals and have this conversation about what they're seeing in their buildings, what their needs are, and trying to figure out ways to make sure that we're meeting them.
Any other comments? All right, six point eight baseball, softball, scoreboards.
And this was, I just wanted to introduce to the facilities committee, so trying to follow it with protocol. We started with the facilities committee, and now he's bringing it as an information, so.
I got new, a new bid for the recommendation from Dr. Freeman on the softball scoreboard. And that's why they didn't have the renderings, they put the signs and everything on there, but I wanted you to see what both scoreboards would look like. Softball is twenty-two feet wide, where the baseball on the farther away is, I think it says thirty-four.
But they're identical, of the size.
Just not in size.
Right, but everything else is.
Yes, ma'am.
Is the same.
Size is dictated by.
The farmer, yes, basically, yes.
I was just gonna say, do you just want to give us a brief back, I mean, in the facilities committee, gave us a brief background of why we were getting new scoreboards and that kind of thing?
Yep, it, it started on a donation, um, from, I'm not sure who it is. There's a, there's forty-five thousand left for softball, baseball school board. Then from the facility committee we came that they needed to have the same things on there. First of all, if you could just go to that, that, uh, laser electric, you know, bid on some things, so the numbers add up for you, especially Mrs. Moore and Mrs. Hesse, is, um, the thirty-six hundred at the top we needed is part of their donation. The eighty-two hundred, where it says steel reinforced concrete, that is not, um, part of the specs. He just put that in, not knowing what the specs would be, but that is not required by, um, NEPCO. And it will stay, um, in warranty as long as they follow the NEPCO specs. They send it to us, they send it to them, and how deep they have to go in the ground, how far they have to do everything like that. So that was just an extra, so we take that out. Also, the twenty-nine, two forty is also laser, and the five thousand sixty-four is laser. So that number changed in the bottom as an installation, where if you look on his, part of it was seventy-seven, seven-two-one, is actually sixty. part of it was seventy-seven, seven-two-one, is actually sixty-nine, five-two-one. Because we took that eighty-two hundred out, because we do not need that.
And with the, as I see this, Herb, these aren't actual costs, like laser, electric, thirty-seven thousand, that's what they're estimating their work would cost, if we were to pay for it.
They are, right.
That's just cost in labor.
Right, takedown, construction costs of putting it up, takedown of the two scoreboards, and then, um, auger cost.
So, the donation total here on the front includes?
Coming.
Positive labor and?
Yep, those three areas, on that one bid spec sheet that he gave us.
So, the cost of the district is pretty?
Yes.
Pretty insignificant compared to the cost of the whole project.
But if you look under donated, the last one, that is contingent. We're finishing in the spring.
Oh, contingent, okay.
If you look at the donated, the last one there, miscellaneous materials, scoreboard.
So, Herb, is the, is the balance at the bottom of page one, the amount coming from the district?
That's installation, that scoreboard, that sign, that's the whole kit included.
And we work with laser, electric, and a lot of others.
Yes.
So, we're.
And they actually put up the, all the scoreboards at Louisville Slugger.
Well, and, you know, obviously, with the donation, we put some, put them in any other donor, or, or that, that'll be, that'll just probably be.
But I just know those numbers when we were talking about, I wanted to make sure, I explained myself, where they went.
And I think the last time, we weren't too sure about the, the girls' softball.
Right, we had, we had.
So, we got that updated.
Yep, and those, those quotes are already there.
Right.
In the back.
But the, but when we met at facilities, I'm saying, we didn't have those.
We didn't.
No, ma'am.
Right, okay.
Nope, not up to date.
So, so just to clarify, the anticipated cost to the district will be eighty-four, forty-one? It's awesome. And, um, my second thing is, uh, and this isn't to question anybody's donations, but I remember many years ago, when those dugouts were done, and, uh, lots of donated work there, and I'm not talking about the most.
No, I understand.
Prior to that, right?
Right.
So, I just, it, it, even though laser, electric has done this at other places, uh, have we run this through whatever kind of, you know, architect or?
They've got to use the specs that are right out by the company to, to make sure the warranty's set. So, if they don't file the specs of the company, they don't have a warranty, which kind of tightens the line. That free type construction, there was no warranty associated with those dugouts or the backstop. But this is something that actually needs to remain under warranty, so they're going to have to file.
And see, NEFCO, and to go one more layer, NEFCO does not install, they'll call a local installer, like laser, electric, to install them, okay?
So, what they do is, laser happens to be a certified installer, and they're also willing to donate, so it works.
So, how do we ensure that they're following these specs? Like, if we have some kind of contract or some sort?
That's a good question, I mean, I don't think.
As working with, and we've talked about that, as working with, um, laser, with that, Martin.
Well, what she's asking is, how do we make sure that laser has followed the specs?
I mean, I'm not saying they wouldn't, but just to make sure that we have some.
Oversight.
Maybe PJ Hair, or we could have somebody sign off on it, or look at it, or, you know?
Can I clarify what you just said? You said that they're a certified NEFCO installer? So, so the?
They would call them.
The scoreboard company has vetted them?
Yeah.
So, okay. I think that's.
Maybe, maybe the simple question is, do we call NEFCO and ask if they'll send a representative out to ensure that the work was done and is backed? I, I think that's the easiest way to start, that's how I would start it, that should.
But do we, do we have anything in writing with them saying they are donating it, and here's the, here's what they're doing? I mean, we don't just say, thanks?
No.
So, we have all, we have all this, and they've signed it, accepted by, I just want to make sure, said back to, come from that before.
And so, we're not voting on it tonight, so one of the things that I think I'm hearing is that you want to make sure that we have somebody to kind of put some oversight into it, ensure that they're working to the specs that they expect.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we'll check with NEFCO first, I can also check with PJ Hair, or somebody to see if they'd be willing to do it. And I come in an extra cost, okay, so be aware then, if we're going to bring them in for oversight, then remember, they run at about two-point-four percent of your total project cost. And these are two separate projects, I mean, it was kind of written in a simple way, we were given what the total cost was, but you've got a project that's in conjunction with the park district, on park district land, and then you've got a project here at the school. Okay, so, I just need, we'll verify with NEFCO to see if they can provide the oversight we're talking about, if they can't kind of work on it.
Well, and like I said, if, if we can have something in writing saying, I mean, I know this is a lot to ask, so donate it, but it's something in writing saying, we guarantee this is what we're doing, if, uh, laser would be willing to do that for us, I don't know.
Well, I'm sure NEFCO, or, or, or they've had a warranty, they probably have some sort of, they'd have to, yeah, they'd have to know that they would.
Well, that's.
Yeah, there's got to be a.
Just so you know, that's kind of what.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we just, right, as long as we, you know, like I said, they're donating, and I don't want to be difficult about it, but I do want to make sure they're doing what they say they're going to do.
Well, if you look at it, that's more along the lines of specs.
Sure.
For example, they're going to, uh, dig eighteen-foot deep concrete piers, plenty foot centers. So, it's telling you what you're going to do, this kind of business.
Sure, but I'm just saying, so as long as they're signing this, and we did this, and we have a recourse, if they don't.
And they, and they would, and they would also, um, want something, I've done this also with donation, they also want something in writing from the school district saying, this is what we gave, so that could be something that both of us can sign as a superintendent and then go, this is what we said we were going to do.
I agree.
Dr. Freeman, and who's ever doing that donation.
Well, I think the second part of that is that, I don't know if you want Dr. Freeman out there measuring the eighteen-foot.
No, no, just make sure they're saying what they're going to get, is what they're.
Yeah, and that's, that's absolutely fine, I, I, I understand that the follow-up is to make sure that that's actually what we get, you know, because we have to have that sign off piece on it too, so, we'll work on that.
And I mean, you know, Ryan, I don't know when he gets back, but I mean, that's the kind of thing that he's pretty familiar with.
I didn't want to say that, but yeah, exactly, we've got something, someone in-house by the time this is going.
That'd be nice.
Any more questions?
So, basically, what you're saying is that this, this donation has come in, this generous donation, we weren't planning it right now, but we have the money, and we are willing go ahead with this timing and everything, that this should be a hope, would not bring us in any complicated situation whatsoever, or, or, or donation.
And part of what's driving this is, we've had some issues off and on with the scoreboard out on the baseball field, and I know there've been times I've been at softball stadium for a game, and.
It works about half the time.
Yeah, so, it's, they're duly replaced, they, they need to be replaced, so.
Is there a, is there a way to get a cover, a cover sheet to see for the newspaper? I mean, to?
Yeah, there's always a way. We may have to break it out a little bit, like I said, we simplified this pretty much, and, got to make sure.
Correct, correct for the press.
So, you're going to take care of that, Dr. Freeman?
Well, you might help.
No, I mean, you don't want me to give you this, it's.
Yeah, I was going to say, what's there about?
I think for right now, I think for right, you know, we just. We're talking, that's where we are, you know, until everything works out, and we get a yes vote, nothing to say, nothing to.
That's a good point.
I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you, have a great night.
All right, uh, six point nine, the district mission statement. I, I think that our mission statement is pretty outdated, um, so we've talked about what we can do to update it, it could be a big undertaking for the entire board, I, and if the entire board wants to work on it, that's fine, otherwise, I'd propose we put together a small committee, um, maybe three or four board members that would work with, two, two board members, that would work maybe with Ann.
That way, we're not posting everything you need.
And just sort of revamp it and bring something back for us to work at.
I think that's a very good idea, I mean, Oregon would be, it had more than two, it lasts forever, and you pick everything.
Right.
It, it turns out to be a big, big deal, so.
I, I agree with reviewing, or at least reevaluating and re-updating.
Yeah.
I've done some look at some of the other schools in the area.
Okay. And I know, I don't know, Jewel, in terms of, I know she was.
I, I, yeah, I've looked at it for a long time, and since we talked about technology, I think technology is in everybody's fingertips now, so it'd be nice to change it up, so, so, but I, and I think we're going to, all right, well, we'll follow up on that a little bit, let you know.
Okay, uh, six point ten, the track club.
Lisa, could you make sure that those are being dealt? And, and can she move to see your names?
Ann's going to see them, we're just going to.
I'll, I'll call her, she's not able to make it. All right, track club, and I think that was just more along, I ended up receiving some information from IDC Friday afternoon, about three-thirty or four o'clock. I have not had a chance to sit down and look at it, I spent Saturday driving, and today working on other stuff, and Sunday was a Sabbath, therefore I rested.
Oh, no.
So, so I'm going to, uh, look at it this week and try to get some stuff put together, and then we'll start to work a little more closely from there. I do feel better now that I've seen actually something from another school district that kind of outlines how they looked at their program, their expectations, it makes me a little more comfortable, so.
And we should have some stuff in place, I mean, we, we need to add to it, we didn't have some stuff in place already for a comfortable volunteer, or a club.
It's a unique club.
Right, right, so it means a few extras probably.
Yes, it does.
Okay, so you'll get that too?
What was the date that they wanted, this time of the target?
Was it March or anyone?
They would like it next month, yes, if at all possible, so, that'll make it a little bit interesting. So, what I'll probably end up doing is, go through, see if I can organize it into something that makes sense, um, and we'll need to have a policy committee meeting probably coming up before that in a way where we can really kind of get through all of that, and then, hopefully by the time we get to March, it's in a position where people are somewhat comfortable.
So, at this point, would my information, are I ready to consider going forward?
I, I wouldn't suggest it tonight.
No.
Let me see what I can come up with.
Because right now I have serious reservations.
I understand. I understand.
So, if you get some of those policies or some suggestions, you'll push those out to us, so we are, at that time, review them?
Absolutely. That's, and if we get to that point and we're not comfortable, then it moves on, I mean, it's got to be something that we're comfortable with, here.
Well, and I would hope they understand that, from our perspective, this is complicated, and we're not trying to just stall or not be cooperative, but there's a lot to think about before this, or, before it could, a lot of components, and we can't rush this.
So, that's been an ongoing conversation, you know?
Because I do want to keep their goodwill, I think they came with goodwill, uh, and I want to retain that, but, uh, just as long as they understand the positions we are in as a legal school board, with legal, consulting, and, and.
What's nice about it is, um, the school district, uh, secondly, information, just approved it, and just approved it all, so they have statements from their attorney that, uh, what regulations they expect me on, what's expected, then we add it pretty high. So, that's what I'm going to hear, going through.
Along that same line of their good information, well, do we know how far IHSA is from, at giving this school to, do we have any idea?
No. All we know is it's an emerging school.
Well, that's, I picked that up, but I didn't know if it had particular close to.
They don't, they don't do it that way, just as, as schools sign on, they get to a certain threshold before they make an actual school.
Similar to what La Crosse just went through, would it two years ago or three years ago, they did a?
Yes.
IHSA's?
So, some of them could remain emerging for fifteen, twenty years, and others may have a more, with weak, depends on popularity and how many schools sign it.
Research, that's what it's all about.
All right, any other comments on, okay, um, other?
I have just one quick other apparent approach to me, I was extremely happy that La Crosse this year did not make mandatory practices over spring break, so they just wanted me to relay, and I said, I didn't have anything to do with that, I know nothing about it, but I'm glad that you're happy to. That had people flying back early from vacations with family members and such, so they're happy that, that's been a little more lenient this year.
I think last year, didn't we approve it about, it was almost after the pack, so they couldn't really just.
Well, just bear in mind, it depends when spring break, the break falls, and I will tell you, most sports do require it, so don't be surprised when it shows up.
They're happy this year, so.
Yeah.
Just thought I'd relay that, you did something right, I guess.
I'm pretty sure softball, baseball, we both have trips over spring break, tracks, going, tennis.
We don't normally get a, a kudos that we've done something else, so I have to share that.
All right, any others?
Saturday was a big day.
Yeah.
So, let me just run through what we talked to the staff about this morning, I'll do it quickly. Cheerleading, uh, made it to the second day, they ended up number ten in the state in medium-sized division, which was awesome, that was pretty cool. Uh, speech sent, I want to say, what did they say, seven different events on, or was it eleven or twelve? They sent a number of them, so, okay, we did have, we did have one of our speech members who was a double regional champion, and, uh, it was, it was neat, so we sent a lot of kids on, in speech. Chess is getting ready to go to state this weekend. Uh, wrestling, won regionals again, they sent, they had eleven boys in championship outs, and won ten of them. So, we won regionals, and, uh, we're, we're rolling again, they, they look good, so, um, girls' basketball has been picking up the pace, we are, I believe, starting regionals, not this week, but next week. Uh, the boys won a big game against Gunland Friday night in basketball, and now we are tied for a conference championship. We actually played the team we're tied with on Saturday here, so, Pekin at home, so if we win that one, we'll have, we'll have a conference championship.
Bell's already in there.
Scholastic Bolt had a big weekend, and won a big JV tournament. Swen, uh, came in, I want to say, did they say second in the middle line, I mean, so, boys looked really good, I know they broke a record in the medley, I was standing there when they did it. By the way, I will tell you, as hot as it is in Five Points, Pekin has a beach.
Yeah, they're option, well, kids are bad, yeah.
It was warm, so, um, good, good weekend, very proud of the kids, they are, they're doing what they do, so, and we're, just let everybody look at that.
All right, I don't think anybody can top that, can they? Okay, uh, on to seven, the consent agenda, um, we have, uh, seven point one, the minutes, seven point one-one, regular board meeting minutes, January thirteenth, twenty-twenty, seven point one-two, executive session meeting minutes, January thirteenth, twenty-twenty, seven point one point three, facility committee, committee meeting minutes, January twenty-second, twenty-twenty. Seven point one point three, facility committee, committee meeting minutes, January twenty second, twenty twenty. Seven point one four, special board meeting minutes, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty. And seven point one five, finance committee meeting minutes, February fifth, twenty twenty. We have seven point two bills, and seven point three reimbursement of course. Through the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, McNabb?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
All right, any questions? On to eight, action items, personnel. Eight point one one, approved employment of Lisa Fuller, as a math teacher? Motion?
So moved. Second.
Any comments?
Make quick discussion on this. So we had two math positions open, we have four very good candidates. And so we were able to kind of work through a few things. This is actually going to show up on a contract as, it's a dual hire, she'll be hired as a math teacher and assistant by the ball.
It helps?
Yes, because we have two vacant volleyball positions.
She does have experience.
She does.
All right. And roll call? Butler?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
All right, eight point one point one D, approved employment of Bailey Little as a math teacher?
Bailey's actually serving with us, oh, sorry.
Gloria and Mandy?
Yes.
Either order, it's fine. Okay.
So Bailey just finished up her certification work. She's currently serving for us right now, and doing an outstanding job, getting very high compliments from a lot of the teachers that are working with her. We're excited about this, Bailey's a new teacher, comes with, comes with no experience, so she's going to get to grow and learn the Washington way. She also will be hired as a math teacher and a volleyball coach.
And her father is a student.
Well, she wanted to, she wanted me to make sure and explain that the job will look different, so she's not just coming in directly to work.
Okay.
Well, if she's as good as he was, we know we got it.
Okay, roll call? Warren?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
All right, and then eight point one point one C, approved employment of Jessica Stricker?
Shrecker.
Stricker, as a Spanish teacher, we have a motion. So moved. Second?
Are you asking?
I'll second.
So you may have known Jessica Shrecker before as Jessica Leonard. So.
Oh, you're on?
Yeah. We're really excited about this. She also wants to coach, she'll probably be one of my role of basketball. And Jessica, since that's what she did for three years in county next year. But now that I've seen me doing it, and we're lucky in this case, we have one opening and one applicant.
All right, need a roll call please? McNabb?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Any questions, passes, and I think we're skipping over the next two.
Yes, we're finishing up some brokerage checks and trying to get a couple of things laid out for the two special ed hires. We're also working on a science position as well, so we're going to finish up some interviews, and hopefully have three candidates for it.
All right, so we do have candidates.
We do, we do. We had, we had some very good candidates, and just kind of picking through all of that.
On to eight point one point two, non-certified employees. Eight point one point two A, approved employment, oh no. Nevermind, we just, is that, oh yeah, we, okay, there she is again. Bailey Little, long-term sub for special education teacher's aide.
As I mentioned, she's here now.
Right, right. All right, do we have, can I do those two together?
Some more.
Okay, do we have a motion, a second?
Second.
You can do them together because they're two separate. Yeah, so shoot, that's the long-term science position.
All right, roll call? Butler?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
All right, eight point one point two B, approved employment of Michael. Michael. Backs. My phone? All right, for the sub food service worker, we have a motion. So moved.
Second.
And I guess that means a subs?
Yes. And so she'll be, she'll be serving as a.
Laborer?
Yeah, we use.
Might be, might be a full time employee, yes.
Yeah.
Let's hope. By then I'll learn to ground, sorry. Okay, roll call please? Seaman?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, eight point two, approved the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school calendar. Does a motion to approve the calendar?
So moved. Second. Brad.
Brad, okay, yeah. Comments, we went over it last month.
Yep, no changes, so.
We have to get out of that. Roll call? Fisher?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
I was going to say, I guess we'll probably push that out pretty quick then, because it helps if people.
Do they put that on the website right away?
Usually, and they'll link it, we'll link it in the board brief, who sent it out. Which, Ann texted me, she'll be working on that again this week, so that hopefully will be.
But they just tie that in.
Hopefully, I'm sure they'll look at it or somewhere else.
All right. Eight point three, approved the school resource officer contract for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. A motion? So moved? Second? Great.
Well, second.
All right, motion second, do we have that, we also went over.
We talked about it briefly last month. This is the actual contract itself, that program has been outstanding, and I definitely don't want to see it get.
Oh, it's giving the same officer?
I believe so.
Okay. Comments? Roll call? McNabb?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Okay, and eight point four, approved student and adult breakfast price for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year.
Yeah, I just, each year we try to put something in here. Unless we're, we're not changing any of the lunch prices, but the breakfast price had been a dollar sixty per student and two dollars for adults. And we're asked, we're recommended to bump that up, but the minimum wage going up, that's, I mean, it's a pretty cheap breakfast price, and so. Next year it'll be a minimum of ten dollars. Our food service workers have, have been below the adjustments, and so they're going to be the ones that are going to be moving, you know, they're going to make the most movement with the minimum wage requirements as they progress. So our overall operation is going, and we're really going to anticipate some of our food, just basic food costs going up at that as well.
Doctor Seeger, is it on the breakfast every day?
You know what, I can, I can run those numbers for you.
I'm just kind of curious.
I want to say it's probably less than a hundred, but we have a, yeah, we have a handful of adults that typically get breakfast. Really a good deal. For two dollars, it's not a bad breakfast for that, so. I'll get that and I'll send that on out.
No hurry, I just was kind of curious.
I want to say it's probably a hundred, a hundred and twenty, maybe.
All right, so there were a motion? No motion? I need a motion, I need a motion.
Move.
Yes.
Motion second. Roll call? Warren?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Number nine, need a motion to go into executive session, nine point one point five, and nine point two point five, just to discuss security and employment issues. Second? Roll call, Essing?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.